Okay, if I could call this meeting to order, please. Ms. Whitby, will you call roll?
Mr. Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor? Not here. Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Right.
Acquorum is present, sir.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise for the prayer and pledge to be led by Councilmember Baxter.
By your heads, please. Surely Father, we just thank you for the many blessings you bestow upon us each day. We're just so thankful that we have the opportunity to conduct the business of North Little Rock in America, Lord. We're just so thankful for that. We just ask that you'd be with us as we make the decisions. We just ask that they would be pleasing in your eyes as well as those of our citizens. We ask for a special blessing upon all of our employees, both uniformed and non-uniformed. We know that they're out there getting it every day, and we just appreciate that. We ask you to forgive us where we fail you. We ask this thing in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
A pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second.
On the motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Will we accept file one and two?
Anybody want to pull either one of those? About a second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Will we accept file one and two?
Anybody want to pull either one of those? About a second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, let's go on into unfinished business. R-18131, we held that last time, Amy.
We did. There was a mistake on the exhibit. We didn't include the dollar amounts on the exhibit, and so I have substituted exhibit with the dollar amount. So if it was called and somebody amended it to substitute the exhibit, it's ready to go.
And that's my amendment. We should, everybody should have that.
All right, let's get it on the table then. How about read R-18131?
Yes, sir. Resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with Plaski County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock as a result of grass cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Now we have the amendment.
State your amendment.
You should have a copy of this, R-18131. Everyone should have a copy.
Okay, so here. Everybody got that? How about a second to amend?
Second.
On the motion to amend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
All right, I need to call a public hearing. Call.
Oh, go ahead. Never mind.
Call a public hearing on this. Anyone here to talk about results of grass cutting expenses and abatement and other nuisances?
Seeing none, close the public hearing.
On the motion.
Now we need a motion to adopt as amended.
Move to adopt as amended.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
All right, I need to call a public hearing. Call.
Oh, go ahead. Never mind.
Call a public hearing on this. Anyone here to talk about results of grass cutting expenses and abatement and other nuisances?
Seeing none, close the public hearing.
On the motion.
Now we need a motion to adopt as amended.
Move to adopt as amended.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you, you had a couple of people sign up for public comments, citizen public comment on legislation. Did you want to do those, or do you want to go ahead and do the legislation?
We certainly can. I'm pulling that legislation, you guys out there on Page Road. If you want to speak, you're welcome to. Stephen and Melvin, I'm pulling the legislation, so if you want to speak, you're welcome to.
It's pulled?
Yeah, it's pulled. Withdrawed.
That's going to happen.
Yep. Not going to happen.
Mayor?
What?
May I make a request? I would really like to consider that, so the council can vote on it either up or down. I think it will probably put us in a more positive position to defend our decision. And that's... Ms. Amy?
And I don't disagree with Councilmember Witcher. It's, this is the sixth time that it's been before the city council. If you all consider it and make a decision on it, then you've made a legislative decision on the application that was put before the council. And those are hard to overturn because you're given a lot of discretion in planning matters that come before you.
And I'm reminded of the concrete plant that we had to buy that we did not take a vote on, and that's part of my motivation.
Say that one more time.
We had an item to come before us regarding rezoning a piece of property for a concrete plant, and we chose not to consider it. And so, we were sued, and we paid a hundred and something thousand dollars for the piece of property.
Well, this is a little bit different than that.
Well, you know, I realize that, but...
Go ahead.
If it just falls off the agenda, can the vendor refile with us?
Sure.
Well, you know, we want it to go away permanently.
And if we defeat it, then it, they can't bring it back for a year, at least.
If it's defeated, it can't come back for a year.
That's correct.
Well, I mean, I get it. The, he asked me to hold this.
Okay.
And until he could get all of his ducks in a row, and I hate to call it and him not know I'm calling it.
Okay, and I understand that if he asks you to hold it.
Okay. And I told, I tried to call Betty today, Betty Williams today, and tell her that this thing was going to go off the agenda, and Betty didn't go to work today, so, yeah.
Mayor, the communication from the church cited that trucks were seen doing work recently, and that concerns me.
They were bringing dirt in instead of taking dirt out, and we stopped them from doing that until the Corps of Engineers is now involved, and ADQ's involved, and everybody's involved. You know, I mean, the guy, last time I talked to him, he told me that Linda told him that he wanted, she wanted apartments there, and he said, "I'm thinking about building apartments there." So, you can't tell, you know, what's going on exactly. There's so many people involved. So, the last time I talked to him, I told him that he needed to hire an engineer and let his engineer and our engineers talk. And that's when ADQ and the Corps got involved in it, wetlands and mitigation and all the good kind of stuff. So, we've got them stopped as best we can. So, I'm going to withdraw that.
O-1854, Councilmember Robinson.
Wait a minute, I'm trying to get there.
Going to hold that one.
Oh, I'm going to hold that one.
All right, consent agenda. Anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda?
Is Ms. Fisher here tonight? Is she here?
No, I told her she didn't have to come. Okay, all right. How about a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All who's in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. New business.
Mayor, we do have one appointee here.
Yeah, this is that next legislation.
Okay.
I pulled that out especially for her.
Thank you.
She is a special lady.
R-18138, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
Resolution appointing Erin Parker to the Rock Region Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Directors.
Move for adoption.
Let me make a few comments on this appointment. Every time I appoint someone to the Rock Region Metro, I really try to get someone that's interested and is an advocate for public transportation. Erin is, works at Children's Hospital, and I know that probably a lot of their employees get to work and get home by public transportation. So I thought she was a perfect fit, along with being young, and me knowing her for most of her life, she's smart, and she's the beginning of my charge over the next length of my term to make sure that we get some young people on these boards so that they can start learning the things that some of us have been around a long time now. So, with that, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor? I'm sorry. Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Erin, come up to the podium. We are so proud of you for accepting this position. It's an important board, and we're glad you're there, and Ms. Whitby is going to issue you the oath of office.
Thank you for your kind words. I, Erin Parker. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arkansas, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Rock Region Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Directors upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Erin.
R-18139?
Please call it.
A resolution approving salary increases to all full-time salaried employees excluding uniformed police personnel and elected officials, all fire personnel, and the police chief of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption. Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
R-18140? Council?
Wait a second. We got a public comment on that one I didn't see. Jimmy, you want to talk on that one?
R-18140.
It's great for everybody to get a raise. The only thing I'd like to note, but I can't ask questions, is how much of a raise is the council member's going to get? It's not on there.
2.2 percent.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, call it, please.
A resolution approving salary increases for elected officials and city council members of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Resolution approving salary increases for elected officials and city council members of the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Question?
Mayor, I saw this last week on the agenda, and I know some of my council members' friends are not going to appreciate my comments, but I'm going to make them anyway, and I'm not opposed to a salary increase for the elected officials in the city of North Little Rock. I am uncomfortable, though, with the timing on the raise for the, my fellow city council members, including myself. I've toyed with the idea of coming up with an amendment, but I didn't want to do that. I don't want to put everybody in an uncomfortable way, but I just think that after the raising of the sales tax the first of the year, and I know the lodging tax didn't have anything, doesn't have anything to do with the general fund or the adjustment in the electric rates, it just seems like that the message that we're sending out to the citizens of North Little Rock is that we're getting a salary increase because of all the increased revenue, and I'm just, I'm slightly uncomfortable with that. And then this morning, I went to a funeral, and four of my friends and constituents and people that I hear from on a regular basis are saying it's like we're getting a big fat raise down there because of all the new revenue in the city of North Little Rock. And so, because of that and my thoughts, everything, I'm going to be, I'm going to be voting no on this, but it's not for the whole thing, it's for half the thing. But anyway, so, when it gets my time to vote, I'm going to be voting no.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Witcher?
Yes.
Counselor, you want to come up and say if we've got questions, thoughts?
Absolutely. I distributed some documents right before the meeting, and I just want to kind of narrate through those, just to make sure that the council's comfortable with them. Just so everybody's sure about what it is that we're talking about, it's small cell technology. As many of you know, I mean, our lives are intertwined with the Internet these days. We use it for business, social connections, entertainment, and this new category of things called the Internet of Things. Sometimes we do that across a wired connection. More and more, we're using wireless connections, primarily these smartphones, like small computers that we have in our pockets that we use to engage in, and all these various functions that we can use the Internet for. Part of the problem that we see is that the demand for bandwidth is anticipated to increase some sevenfold over the next three years, and those are going to be requirements that our citizens have. The industry's solution to this has been small cells. So if you contrast that to the large cell towers that we're used to seeing, and they've been presented to city council for decades now, those cell towers carry, have a big footprint, they carry lots of subscribers to them, but the data speed is not like what it is for a small cell. A small cell is a smaller device. It has...
You have a motion to suspend the readings, suspend one reading, which one?
What is your motion?
What's your motion? You'll suspend the readings?
Yes.
Motion's been made to suspend all readings.
And who seconded that?
Give me a second.
I'll second it.
All right, on the motion, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt, and I'll give you an executive summary real quick. Move to adopt.
Second.
The, uh, we met these people, um, if I'm not mistaken, in Charlotte last year at the NLC. And I was real intrigued with them, and, um, so they came up here, and we took them out with Chris and, and Patrick and a few of his people, um, and they patched some of our holes. And we wanted to see how well it held up. And, um, it did so much better than anything that we've ever used before. So, these people actually, I don't know if they give it, or if they loan it to us, the, the equipment to do it, and we buy the, the, the material from them. So, that's basically in a nutshell what we're doing here. Is that right, Patrick? Okay. All right, uh, do I have a motion to adopt?
Yes, sir.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh eighteen sixty-two, council members Taylor and Robinson.
Please call it.
An ordinance approving a waiver of section one point two point five of chapter eleven of the North Little Rock Municipal Code, public property, streets, sidewalks, and easements to allow installation of an electronic gate as a traffic control device at the entrance of Cypress Crossing Neighborhood First Streeting.
Robinson?
Can I talk?
Sure.
Cypress Crossing is paying, uh, for this gate and for the installation and upkeep. But what I would like to do is an amendment.
Yeah, let's get it on, on the table first. How about a motion?
Okay, so move.
There you go, motion to suspend all readings, or one reading?
Uh, suspend all readings.
Second. Yes, second. Okay, motion to suspend all readings, uh, on the motion.
On the motion to suspend, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes, we also need to amend it, exhibit A N.
Okay, what's your amendment, Ms. Robinson?
Well, what, what I would like to do is that they will be, uh, five years from now, ten years from now, this is their gate, and it's their responsibility to maintain it, and not, you know, us take over, or us go out and repair.
I thought it said that.
It does, in the legislation that, um, the Property Owners Association will maintain, um, the gate.
It's already in there.
Okay.
I, I guess one of the, maintain the gate, that means keep it operable, but what if at some time it needs to be removed, or something, would that also be their responsibility to have it removed, or what would, does that come under maintain?
I would think so, yeah.
Okay, so they'll be responsible removing, if there's ever any problems, and they don't want it anymore, then it would be their responsibility, okay.
White?
I just had a question, what happens when the power goes out?
Well, it depends, um, some of them have batteries, and they'll work off a battery, and some of them will default, uh, to open. Power goes off, somehow they go open, I don't, I don't know how, this particular one, but, does anybody know? I haven't been working with that, with that group at all, so I don't know. But that's a good question, um. Yeah?
Some of them have a pin, you can pull it.
There's different kinds.
So what, this one is what kind, do we know? We don't know?
I, I don't know, I'm just trying to make sure it's theirs and not ours.
Uh, we can certainly, uh, amend that, to say that in the event of power outage, the, uh, the gates will default to open. Want to make that amendment?
Yeah, sure, it's okay.
All right, how about a second, is that all right with you?
Yes.
All right, on the motion to amend?
Um, who made the motion, and who seconded?
I made the.
Beth and Linda.
And then where are you putting that in?
Wherever our council tells us to.
How about we'll, um, add a section three that says, "In the event of power failure, um, the Cypress Crossing Property Owners Association, um, will be responsible to ensure that the gate remains open during the period of the power outage."
Well, I would, I wouldn't put it to a person, I would make sure that they buy a gate that defaults to.
That defaults to open, okay.
Yeah.
All right, let me try again, then.
Okay.
Um, Mayor, there, there is something, uh, about a battery backup in the description that Taylor just pointed out. I don't know if that, if that helps to know that.
If that's, if that's what that means.
Now, let's go ahead and amend it anyway.
Okay. Um, how about, um, the, section three, that the Cypress Crossing Property Owners Association is required to install a gate that will default to open in the event of a power outage?
Perfect.
Okay.
How about a second?
Second.
Can we add exhibit A also?
Okay, and that same amendment, add exhibit A, um, Ms. White? Yeah, can you do that to, uh, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, on the motion to amend?
Ross?
There's also a B.
A B.
There's a A and B.
Oh, it was just supposed to be the A, I, I had forgotten to get the pictures to attach to the legislation, so, um, I asked Diane's office to pull the photographs, 'cause the legislation references in exhibit A, but I had just forgotten to attach the pictures, so it's not.
So, is B in there?
We didn't, I didn't intend to have a B, an exhibit B.
Okay.
And it's not in the body of the legislation.
Amendment in exhibit A. Okay, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
So move.
As amended, on the motion.
On the motion to adopt is amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh eighteen sixty-three, Mayor Smith.
Uh, let's go back to sixty-two, I, um, I'm concerned about this, um, let's see if it works. On sixty-three.
Mayor, can I say something on sixty-two, too? Can we make sure that we get a clean copy with all these amendments and everything to the association, so that they'll have it for their records, for their association records?
Um, sixty-three?
Please call it.
An ordinance adopting regulations to govern the construction, installation, maintenance, and removal of small wireless communication facilities in the right-of-way declaring an emergency.
So move.
What are you doing, one or two, or three?
I'm still on resolution.
I'll move to suspend the readings.
Suspend the.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend all readings.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Counselor, you want to come up and, um, see if we've got questions, thoughts?
Yes.
Absolutely, I, I distributed some, uh, documents right before the meeting, and, uh, I just want to kind of narrate through those, just to make sure that, that the council's comfortable with them. Uh, just so everybody's sure about what it is that we're talking about, it's, uh, small cell technology. As many of you know, I mean, our, our lives are intertwined with the internet these days. We use it for business, social connections, entertainment, and this new category of things called the internet of things. Sometimes we do that across a wired connection, more and more we're using wireless connections, uh, primarily these, uh, smartphones, like small computers that we have in our pockets that we use to engage in, and, uh, the, all these various functions that we can use the internet for. Part of the problem that we see is that, uh, the demand for bandwidth is anticipated to increase some sevenfold over the next three years. And that, those are going to be requirements that our citizens have. The industry's solution to this has been small cells. So if you contrast that to the large cell towers that we're used to seeing, and they've been presented to city council for decades now, uh, those cell towers carry, uh, have a big footprint, they carry lots of subscribers to them, but the data speed is not like what it is for a small cell. A small cell is a smaller device, uh, it has fewer subscribers, has a smaller radius within which it works, but the data moves very, very quickly. Uh, so, uh, with the, with the increases in demand for bandwidth that we see coming in the future, small cells are kind of uniquely positioned, uh, to fill that need. Uh, as different wireless service providers, uh, have attacked this problem, uh, it seems to be that installation in the right-of-way is kind of the way ahead. These are smaller, I said, they're not like these, you know, hundred-and-fifty-foot cell towers that we've seen in the past, they're very small, they can be installed at a lower, uh, elevation, and, um, the most, the fastest and most cost-effective means is to install them in the right-of-way. Uh, so, uh, it, it, not only reduces capital costs, but it reduces maintenance costs as well. From the city's perspective, we are managers of the right-of-way, and we own lots of poles in the right-of-way. And, and, uh, while it's easy for us to see how important reliable high-speed data is to our citizens, and how, you know, there's an important need to fill there, there's also other needs, there's needs like safety, and, uh, efficiency, and aesthetics, and, uh, you know, other public, uh, important public interests that are out there. The, the regulatory framework around small cells is all developing right now. You know, there was some legislation that was presented in the last, uh, session, uh, here in Arkansas, there is a, a bill pending from Senator Thune right now in, uh, DC, and there are conversations going on with FCC, uh, National League of Cities is part of those, uh, conversations, uh, as well as, uh, American Public Power Association, and here in Arkansas, many of the cities have participated in those conversations as well. Uh, at the bottom of the executive summary, you can see kind of the, some of the highlights that we wanted to hit, to try to balance the city's interests, and I'll say, uh, uh, you know, it, it's been, uh, a long haul in developing this regulation, I want to, you know, express my appreciation both to the city of Conway, who's, uh, participated in this with, jumping in with both feet, and AT&amp;T, you know, there are many, uh, wireless service providers out there, but AT&amp;T was really willing to jump in and, and dig through the verbiage to, to try to help us understand what works in industry and what doesn't work. Uh, Ronnie Dedman is here, new, uh, president of AT&amp;T Arkansas, he's, uh, joining us, and, and, and I have to mention too, Donovan Tally and Melissa Johnson with AT&amp;T, who've really gone through lots of meetings, we've sat in the room for many hours together, uh, struggling through a lot of the language, and trying to get to a solution that works. Uh, you can see these interests at the bottom, uh, just to touch on a few of them, you know, for safety, uh, we think that it's important that we don't use pole-top installations, uh, because of arc flash and concerns like that, we want, uh, installations only where we can access it by a bucket truck, uh, we want all applications to include pole-loading calculations, we, we're going to have defined safety standards, like the National Electric Safety Code, and we want, uh, any violations that are found to be quickly remedied. You know, we think that this is an efficient regulation, in that it maximizes the use of our existing poles, it's, uh, efficient in the application process, and that there's, uh, twenty-five similar poles can be put on each application. Uh, it has a combined right-of-way and attachment permitting process that creates efficiency in the approval process, and it's structured to, uh, expedite pre-approved designs, and you'll see one of those submitted with the, uh, amendment. And being fair to the entities that want to attach, uh, we think that it's important to only, uh, allow FCC-licensed entities to, uh, to install wireless, uh, facilities. Uh, we don't want, uh, um, it, other folks just drumming up a business where they can squat on the pole, where they don't have a license, they're just trying to squat on our poles and sell off, uh, the right to use that facility to, to the highest bidder, we don't think that's appropriate. We do think that it's appropriate that all licensed entities ought to be treated the same, that's a requirement under the FCC. We want a good risk allocation, and we don't want to fear with, uh, interfere with attachments that are already there, including our own. Uh, as far as our appearance standards, that's going to be very important in our community, and I know it's very important to all of you, uh, we want a minimized visual impact as much as technology really allows, uh, we want to minimize the number of poles, uh, that we have in our, uh, city, and that's why it's important for us to be able to, uh, co-use where we can. We want special protections for our historic district and our district, our decorative lights that we have in our community, and, uh, I appreciate that, uh, uh, you know, to get the feedback that it's reasonable to go back after eight years and say, "Hey, is there new technology out there, is there something that might work better?", uh, not to try to mess up a bubble map of a, uh, of a wireless service provider, but just to say, "If something that is this big can be, uh, met with a, a piece of equipment that's this big, then we can, we could upgrade and improve that, uh, service." We want a good cost recovery mechanism in our regulation, both for application fees, to represent kind of the costs that we've had in the front end of negotiations and recover some of that, uh, and well as cover our staff time in reviewing applications. Uh, all make-ready costs would be borne by applicants. Uh, attachment fee structure is similar to what you'd see in Little Rock, uh, we do have re-inspection fees that you'd see at the end, in case we have to roll an engineer who's going to, you know, check that work was done properly, if they have to roll again, then we'd be able to recover the cost for that. I don't know if you want me to pause here, go through the amendments that we have, or...
Pause, uh, questions? Am I correct, you can only have one provider per pole, is that correct?
Yes, so, uh, and that has, uh, two implications to it, one is aesthetic, our interest, and how many devices do you want hanging off of one pole? There are some, uh, pictures on the internet out there of what I've called the Frankenpole, you know, that just has, I mean, boxes hanging off of it every direction, and you're looking at it going, "Man, I'd hate to have that in my front yard or in front of my business." So from an aesthetic standpoint, we think it probably looks better. From a technical standpoint, uh, right now, it seems like the radios tend to step on each other if they're too close together. So, uh, you know, from a technical standpoint, we think that we'd have more reliability and, uh, and less conflict among users if they're on separate poles.
Are we going to have these poles in residential neighborhoods?
Uh, I think that they would be in residential neighborhoods, uh, so, uh, you know, this would be upgraded service that they'd have, but, uh, because...
As in, as in my front yard?
Very possibly. Uh, so it's, uh, uh, anywhere where I think, uh, uh, the wireless service providers see that they have a demand for usage, uh, the video's framing, if the, if the page doesn't load that quickly, they can see what, how, what the speeds look like, and they can upgrade the service using these, uh, small cell, uh, systems.
Questions? Any other questions, Ms. White?
Public hearing?
Excuse me?
The public hearing, is, is this going to be up for a public hearing?
Yeah, I don't know why, but we'll get him to explain that, too. Other questions on the contract?
Let me see if I understand this, so, if, if all I have is wifi in the house, I don't have anything else, right? And down the street, there's a small cell spot, I can go down there and I can, uh, I can stream Game of Thrones better than probably in my house?
You're, right, so if you had a hotspot or a wireless device, if you were accessing the internet wirelessly?
About my phone? Yes.
And you're within range of the small cell, you're, it's going to move considerably faster. There's been some discussion that this is the new 5G, there's some debate over whether this is 5G or just super robust 4G, but it's, it's definitely...
What's the range? It's like five-hundred feet, or?
I think it, it depends on topography, how high the, uh, uh, you know, the antenna is mounted, and the power that's used behind it. One of the things that we had discussed, uh, some of you, uh, went out to see the first kind of mock-up installation, it was very large, we felt like, you know, that was just not going to be something that people in the community would, would like, you know, so a smaller installation is only accomplished by having lower watt radios, having a smaller range, so it's a less obtrusive installation, uh, but there's the possibility that you have to have more of them.
You can see it from his house, he can probably use it. I mean, wouldn't you, wouldn't you guess, Ronnie? Yeah. So it's not like you got to.
I would defer to the man that knows. Well, depending on how close that, that nearest one is, though.
Right, yeah, I mean, you would hope that it's, if you're using it, you'd hope that it was close.
So now the kids hanging out on the street are streaming video because of the faster frame rate. Wow, okay, I got you.
And, and let me just say that, uh, you know, uh, I'll invite Donovan or, or, uh, some of the AT&amp;T folks back here to throw a rock at me if I misstate something, I'm doing the best that I can, from, from the meetings that we've been in, and what I've tried to educate myself on the technology as, as we went along, but, uh, I'll, I'll trust them to correct me if I misstate something.
Ms. Ross? Ms. White?
How many new pole devices can we expect in the city, and what, in what period of time?
Well, it, I think it depends, is the answer, so the more that we can create a predictable process, and that's one of the things that we are trying to do, I think the faster that we can see deployment, it's going to be driven by the business case. Uh, the first iteration, I think, that we're looking at, uh, with AT&amp;T was, you know, some around fifteen poles, around fifteen poles. I think Verizon is, uh, you know, planning to install as well, uh, it's not beyond the pale that we could see installations from, uh, Sprint or AT&amp;T, and then I think as, as that increase that I talked about, you know, where we're forecasting an increase in data flows, I think as that data flow increases the demand for it, uh, we're going to see more installations.
And my other, pardon, my other question was, so what parts of the city would be receiving these first?
Initially, I, I can't, uh, decide to the specific locations, but I think that they're based on density, and most likely the density of, of their particular customer base who are using those.
We know, though.
Saying a nod and about...
Chief Bradley, didn't, didn't we get that, uh, information on where the first ones they're going to install are? Where were they?
As I recall, the, uh, several of them were around the, uh...
Yeah, first, the first bunch is going to be around Old Main. Ms. Ross?
I know one, um, that's not my question, but that, there was expressed need on East McCain, too, uh, that, in that area, the density in that area, the traffic and the businesses, but that's not my question, so...
AT&amp;T had sent a map over, and, and, and I remember, because we got it to our engineering people, because they're already trying to lean forward on some of these permit reviews, because it's all new to us, we're, we're trying to be as efficient as we can, I just can't remember exactly where those sites are.
Okay, and I know I talked to you about, you know, on these, that, you know, there's a option, and, you know, for, they won't have to, you know, have to be licensed and everything, and then when we got self-insured, I was like, whoa, self-insured, but, because you explained only FCC-licensed companies, but now their contractors will be the ones doing the installation, it won't technically be AT&amp;T out there doing, is that correct?
Right.
And so...
They'll still have to be bonded.
They'll have to be bonded, but it'll all go back, it'll all, it all flows back to AT&amp;T, or Verizon, or whoever, so...
Right, and so part of the, uh, leverage on all of that is that, uh, you know, after a permit is issued, uh, you know, work will proceed, if work does not proceed within, you know, I think it's a six-month timeframe, then the permit will be deemed abandoned, but as long as work is progressing, uh, and, uh, you know, the installation is made, before power is connected, we're going to send somebody out there to inspect it and make sure everything is right. We did, and, and one of the things I'll touch on in the amendments is, uh, we said, "Well, what if we can't get somebody out there in five days?", and kind of the agreement was, "We'll, we'll go ahead and let it turn on, they can turn it on, but it'll still be subject to inspection."
That was the other thing, is, you know, that they would notify if there wasn't any technical, I mean, there wasn't, it wasn't explicitly said, you know, after they notify, but when they do notify, the electric department will be doing the inspections, is that correct?
I think that that's really where we're kind of...
Definitely where.
Right, that's, that's more of the focal point about, uh, where a lot of the permitting's going to be controlled, that it'll be in our engineering and design group at North Little Rock Electric.
That's one thing I want to make sure that it is, that it does go to, to Electric, because they're the, they're the ones that are going to be... Do all, do all, do all inspections then, so, and, uh, you know, we keep going back to the number of placements, so, is there an amount that one company can have?
A maximum limit, there is no maximum limit stated in the regulation.
Okay, so if they wanted to come in and put a thousand, they could put a thousand?
Well, we, we could, we would say we, we're not going to permit her.
Right, but we have to, okay.
I, I talked to Mr. Dedman last week, and he assured me that, uh, if any of these things go in, uh, uh, not properly, or, uh, up to what the contract says, that we can call him personally, and he'll make sure that, uh, it is where it's supposed to be and look like it's supposed to be, and all that stuff, and I have all the confidence in the world that he will make that happen.
I mean, we do have, uh, we do have an amendment to amend in, I think that was what, B, but now this, the B is only for the wooden poles, it is not for the decorative poles, correct?
If you'll see, it's, it's, uh, listed as B one. So that was, uh...
Let's, let's finish our question, counsel. Mr. Harris?
So, the city of North Little Rock, uh, on this initiative, are we a leader, are we a follower, are we in the middle, where, where are we at, and, and...
Well, I think we're a leader, but, uh, uh, you know, with public power communities, uh, it's, it's more process to work through, uh, you know, in other words, Little Rock adopted an ordinance, uh, last year, so they've had an ordinance on the book for quite some time, but they don't, uh, deal with the same issues that we do. Uh, as far as public power goes, there's two approaches, one is our approach, that, uh, we're leading the way, I'd say, with Conway Corporation, and, uh, we've been in discussion with every other public power community in the state of Arkansas. Uh, the other approach is Bentonville's approach, uh, which their, uh, uh, their approach is, is more to, to keep wireless service providers off their poles, so they're setting additional poles to be used, and we just didn't think that that was the best answer for our community.
Okay, so, this improvement is needed regardless, because the bandwidth would just need it, so it's, uh, this is just a kind of a debate as to which is the proper method of doing, is that right?
As to how to go about doing it.
Any other questions? You want to talk about the amendments?
Sure, I can run through them very quickly, I know that you've got a, a big document in front of you, but I can run through these pretty quickly, we were just down to kind of, uh, sharpening the saw this weekend, uh, you'll find that there was, uh, uh, one typo in, uh, page six, page six, section one point twenty, on the definition of overhead. Uh, on, uh, page seven, section, uh, one point, uh, twenty-nine, the definition of tag has been modified to approximate the industry standard, the original definition was kind of, uh, pulled out of the air by, uh, myself and a couple other municipal attorneys, and, uh, uh, the definition that is shown now is one that's, uh, more widely used in the telecom industry, it'll be easier to adapt to. Uh, on page seven, section one point thirty, traffic pole, uh, definition is being deleted because that's been moved under, uh, section one point two four. Uh, page nine, section two point two point four, uh, there's a few descriptive words that Page nine, section 2.2.4, there's a few descriptive words that have been, that were in there that have just been deleted as superfluous, they were extra and were unneeded. On page 17, please tell me if I'm going too fast. On page 17, section 4.5, that definition was amended specifically to allow tags that are constructed of plastic. We'd mentioned aluminum, but you can all, that's saying we can use plastic as well, that it's sufficiently durable. On page 25, section 7.7.3, we're allowing for minimal changes to equipment after installation without re-permitting. If they need to go in and change out a radio or do something like that, that's not something that requires a permit. They can just do it after it's been properly installed. On page 26, section 8.2, that allows for a device to be used when inspection cannot be performed in five days. As we mentioned earlier, it would, so they could go ahead and use the device subject to a later inspection. Page 26, section 8.3, just gives some assurances by us to wireless service providers that when we do re-inspections, we will be diligent about it, we'll be about it, we'll be prompt. On page 26, article nine, that clarifies that space will not be reallocated unless or until a permit is abandoned. It just clarifies that sentence with a little introductory phrase, but the intent was always the same. On page 28, section 11.3, that clarifies that only one spare custom pole of each type needs to be provided. One of the requirements that we have is if we have custom poles made, either poles of a greater diameter or perhaps if we are replacing a decorative pole, anytime that happens, we would get a spare. But we don't need one-for-one spares, that would even be hard to store. But we do need a spare for each type. In case there's a car wreck or something happens and we need to change that pole out, it'll probably take some time to get a new one ordered in. We need to hurry up and be about that maintenance work. Appendix B1 is attached, I'll talk about that in just a second. But then throughout the document, post-installation inspection was changed to a capitalized term because we declined it. So, as far as appendix B1 goes, you can see the design. This is the, I guess we'd call mock-up 2.0 that some of you had the opportunity to go see at Mas-Tech with the smaller box and the smaller arm antenna mounted beneath, as is shown on the front page of that, on a distribution pole. This would be, if amended in, this would be a pre-approved design. So, at least until changed, it would be a design that could be approved by staff. Any design that has not been pre-approved by council would have to be, it doesn't necessarily have to come back to council, but it has to go through a stakeholder process, staff can't approve that on their own.
Ms. Ross?
Now, this is only for the wooden poles, correct?
Yes.
It's only wooden poles, and so when we get to the decorative poles, will they bring back a design for us, or how will that work?
Every decorative pole, the way that it works right now is we're saying every decorative pole is a non-standard application. It's got to be, we got to look at that on a case-by-case basis. The regular aluminum poles that we have, I anticipate that we'll have a standardized design for that pretty soon that will come back.
Will you bring that back to us?
Right, so that will be to amend in.
Then, okay, this is wood only.
But this will get started on what the wood poles would look like, assuming it meets the standards for the council.
Ms. White?
I have one other question. As these are being installed and we are contacted by somebody from the community who has no clue what this is, it might be in their yard or in their, whatever, in their sightline or something, what's our recourse? Who do we contact?
Come, it's a camera, we're watching them. It's a camera, we're watching them.
Well, they, I guess just call the mayor's office and, you know, we'll try to guide them in the right direction. That's where most everybody goes first anyway, so.
One of the things that we wanted to be able to, you know, try to make an executive summary and some kind of documents like that is just so it can be shared with the public. So, they'll know what these are and why that we're doing it and how this is going to enhance, you know, the service that they get. If one of these is in your front yard, you're going to get some screaming internet service, so that's going to be a good thing.
This fee structure, is it average? I mean, since it's new, I mean, how are we coming up with?
You know, it's, fee structures are all over the place in the country. There are some cities that would probably say that ours are nosebleed high, and there are some that would say that ours are very low. One of the things that we felt like, you know, Little Rock had kind of put a marker down that we felt like, well, let's try to see if we can stay within the realm of that. Some of our adjustment point off of that, especially with all the work that has been done to develop the regulation, is in the application, you know, our application fees are significantly higher. But part of that is because we're trying to streamline the process, all-in-one permit, and to kind of recapture some of the costs, the front-end costs that we've had.
Was this discussed with all the providers? This fee schedule, would, did you bring in all the providers that, kind of discussed with them what we're rated?
And so, we had a meeting with Verizon in the spring, I want to say. And last week, I'd made contact with a Verizon representative to make sure that they were in the know about how this was proceeding. If you'll recall, a few years back, Verizon adopted the first small cell ordinance, came to us, and we had no idea what we were looking at. And it, you know, the fees, I think, were, you know, between $1,500 and $2,000 a year, if it, if memory serves me. But, you know, the fees destroyed the business model, nothing ever got built. And for the kind of customer concentration they've got in this area, so I think this is a better approach.
We've been working on this for a year, at least. I've talked to people in DC, I've talked to people consulting in Texas. Jason's talked to 10 times that many people, so we think we got it right. And, you know, Ronnie's quite the businessman, so I was watching every move. I'm going to let him outshine Jason. Okay, we ready to amend, Ms. Ross?
Well, I have a question first. So, at any one time, can, will there be a map somewhere that we can look at and see where they are placed? Is there, you know, how will we go about that? Is that something that AT&amp;T would have? Is that something that the city planning department will have? Who will have that?
I would assume that all of this will be in Microsoft.
Electric will have it, okay, so.
We have a digitized map of our footprint now that, and these will be included within our digital map.
Okay.
Yes, and that's.
How about a motion to amend?
So move. Second.
Okay, how about a motion to amend, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes, move for adoption is amended.
Second.
All right, what's the deal on a public hearing on this one?
It was just an important matter, and I thought that when we have big, odd things, we often have public hearing. There's no legal requirement for a public hearing.
I'll call a public hearing. All those that want to speak? Yes. Three minutes.
I don't need three minutes, I have one thought question. Are they going to have to put electric meters on every pole? Or how are they going to get electricity to each one of these? That would look awful weird if you had.
That's a great question, Jimmy, and if you'll sit down, I'll answer it for you.
Thank you.
And the answer is no, we will not meter each one of these. We will meter one and do the math. So, if we, for the size of the installation, if we have to put a meter box and the associated equipment, it's just going to make the whole thing bulkier. So, the idea is that we'll have a smaller installation, we'll have a cutoff, all the safety devices, but we'll only meter one, we won't meter them all.
JT, Sikreski? Thank you for being here, JT.
You're welcome. Thank you for recognizing me. Real quick, I think it's great that we're working with the, with AT&amp;T and others to do this. I think it's a very important thing for our city. I have one minor concern. When we build a cell tower, for the data, you have a backhaul, you have fiber or something that goes back. So, when they install these on the pole, I assume they're going to have to have some type of data connection. I'm curious if they're going to be running new fiber through the neighborhoods or what the plan is to manage that.
Is that a great question too? Great questions, we'll give you an answer.
It is, so these are, these are insightful questions. So, because there are different theories about how you backhaul the data, some do it across radio. I think the most reliable and robust way is fiber, and that's the way these will be handled, is across fiber. So, the signal will hit the small cell, it'll hit the fiber, and it'll be onto the internet from there.
One last question. Should we pass this tonight? How soon can we expect the installation of the first pole?
We hope to see these up and running by October.
By when?
October.
October.
The first iteration by October.
Okay, on the motion.
Have you adjourned the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On the motion to adopt is amended, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Oh, 1864, Councilmember Height?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of section 14.22 of the zoning ordinance to allow a subdivision sign on certain real property located at 9403 Northbrook Drive in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, declaring an emergency.
First reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Let me call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on the subdivision sign located at 9403 Northbrook Drive? Seeing none, close of public hearing. Do you have a motion to adopt? Move to adopt, move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
Yes.
The developer, Byron's here, Byron McKimmy, thank you for coming tonight, pretty subdivision, keep it going.
Oh, 1865, Councilmember Taylor?
Please call it.
An ordinance amending ordinance number 7697, the zoning ordinance to establish the Highway 391 signed overlay district, declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second. On the motion to suspend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher? Yes. Yes.
How about, let's call a public hearing. Anybody here to talk on the sign overlay district on Highway 391? Seeing none, close of public hearing, how about a motion? Let's get it on the floor, then we'll ask questions. Motion to adopt. How about a second?
Second.
Ms. White?
I did some research on this, and I was trying to see what length of, you know, how long is this new district to be? I couldn't tell by, you know, my research. I should have called somebody.
We have to ask Sean.
There's Sean.
Did you have a map?
Yes, I did, yes.
So, excuse me, it'd be from the intersection down to Highway 70 and then 1,900 feet on, as you're looking, your right side and 1,500 on your left side. So, it's going to cover the first property on both sides of the intersection.
And this is basically, this is all business, there are no residents.
No, nowhere near.
Nowhere near this, so it's all businesses.
So, it's going to cover the truck stops on both sides and whatever the lower two businesses there are in that district.
How about a motion to adopt?
So move.
You already have one?
You already have one?
Mm-hmm.
On the motion.
And you adjourned the public hearing that you convened?
Have I convened one yet?
Did. On the motion to adopt, Ross?
I have a question.
Question.
Okay, and I know that this, you know, this assigned district is, you know, this, it'll be in, under the planning, and we have them all listed, and we have the regulations, because some of them are different. And I know that no motion is in the regular electronic copy sign legislation, but can we add F and G, no motion? You know, we've put the time on there, the 30-second interval, can we add no motion for G?
You see a problem with that, counsel?
It's just easier when it's all right there and you know exactly what each one has.
How about a second to that motion? To not have any motion.
To, that's my amendment to add G.
Amendment is to have no, no motion?
No motion.
And how about a second?
I'll second that.
On the motion to amend?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt as amended? Motion to adopt as amended.
And I've got one more amendment, if somebody could make it. As I was looking at this, we have this Highway 391 sign overlay district listed as Q, and right above it was Calvary Road Sign Overlay District, but that is not on the table at this time. So, if we could change it to P.
So, this will be P?
So, this will be P, as opposed to Q.
Okay, second. Give me a second to amend.
I'll second that.
Okay, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Okay, how about a motion to adopt as amended? We already got that, okay. Motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
No.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Concludes new business.
Thank you very much. Let's look and see, we've got public comment, Jimmy Arden.
Charlie Height, I appreciate you looking at that the way you did about getting a raise. I still feel you deserved it, but I appreciate you looking out for the people that would look the other way and not understand why you was getting a raise. Mayor, I promised some people I would do this, but I was not going to pass their battle. Mr. Penny is not returning people's calls, so they tell me. I don't want to stick my neck out too far. But I do know I called, left my number for him to call to ask a question, he hadn't returned mine. Mayor Hayes was right, we need to develop that area and everything. But he's not even getting the proper permits he's supposed to have. They're clearing land up there right now, I was up there today. I don't think they had a permit, had backhoes up there clearing the rain. And I'm not for sure of the correct term, but that black stuff, it sticks about that high and two feet under the ground, they're not even putting that up. But we do need to develop that area. But he also needs to go by rules and regulations. Thank you very much.
I think Sean's sitting right there behind you somewhere, so he heard you. Chris Corbett.
Good evening, thanks for your time. My name's Chris Corbett, and I want to bring to your attention some issues I have with the building code. I know you don't have it in front of you, but I would like to read you one section that's being enforced against me. It's on page one, and I'm stunned to have to actually bring it to y'all's attention. But one, section 1.1.3, permit required. It says it shall, and shall has some very legal connotations to it, that you could have used a may or a must. But it says you may, it may be, 1.1.3, permit required. It shall be unlawful for any person to install, repair, replace, or perform any work in the city without a permit from the community planning department, except for two items. One, painting, interior and exterior, and two, any floor covering. Now, to give this a little bit of weight, I'm a licensed professional engineer in about seven states. I forget how many I'm licensed in. I'm a licensed attorney, I'm a master plumber, and I've been doing that for probably 15 years. And in looking at this municipal violation or municipal code, I want to bring to your attention that certain activities and stuff y'all have engaged in is a violation of the law. And before you answer the question, I want to know if you've done any of these things and that you have the fifth, you can plead the fifth, right? So, have anybody replaced a light bulb? If you just raise your hand, you don't have to, but in your mind, have you replaced a light bulb?
Comments only, Chris.
And then, number two, have you replaced a doorknob? Have you replaced a flapper in the back of a toilet? Have you replaced a toilet? As a master plumber, you don't need permits to do that, but according to your code, you're required to have a permit. And I've hoped to avoid litigation on this. I've emailed, I think, Ms. Ross, I couldn't find any other email addresses, but based on my legal opinion, I think that y'all need to look at this building code, reconsider it, and this is on page one. There's several other unconstitutional provisions in the ordinance, and I'd hope you'd take time to look at it and consider my comments and take a look at it. Thank you. I'm going to leave some cards on the desk if you want to call me. I'm going to go eat dinner next door. If you'd like to come over there, we'll be having a beer, and we can talk about it some more. Thank you for your time, Chris Corbett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any council member? Mr. Height? I hate to give Mr. Lane, Patrick Lane, the big head, I hate to give Mr. Lane, Patrick Lane, the big head, but last week, one morning, I turned up Randolph to go to John F. Kennedy Boulevard, and a tree had fallen out of somebody's front yard, and it was covering half of, blocking half of Randolph. So I called Mr. Lane on the phone and asked him if anybody called in about it, and he said no, but he said he appreciated me calling. Five minutes later, I came back to my house, and Mr. Lane is out there with his chainsaw and his hard hat on, trimming that tree so the cars could get by. I just want to send out, out of void of Patrick Lane. He's a nanny, Ms. Ross?
Mayor, you know that getting generators into the fire stations has always been like one of my goals, and I know that we're making, we're making good progress. I think we still have like four or five stations to get them into, but Friday night, Station 3 was without power all night long. And they're trying to get in their turnouts, trying to, I mean, they have to, the doors are locked. We've got to really, and I guess what really, you know, this has always been my initiative to get them in there, and Ward 1, three fire stations, none of them have a generator in them. So, whatever it takes to do that, if we can move that ahead, we've looked at grants, there's, you know,